...of the comment should be civil. Thank you. The first speaker is Padma Rao. Would you please, the first and only speaker, would you please give your name and address when you speak?
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. I hereby object to the improper constitution of the township board tonight because it includes the non-elected city manager and attempts to confer on the mayor trustee status to which she has never been elected. Your inclusion of the city manager as ex-official member of the board is likewise objectionable, and I object to same. The city manager has no more status than any other elector. The same may be said of the mayor. The CEO of the township presides over the township board by statute, and I demand to know upon what authority the township's executive officer is denied her rightful position on the board tonight. The township government is authorized by statute, and by statute only. To the extent that no authority exists in the statute for actions taken by you as the board, such actions are ultra-viruses and therefore illegal. I object to Corporation Council's continued involvement in township matters even after correctly admitting a disqualifying conflict of interest. I object to this board's demand for an audit to determine the township's functions. I submit then when you ran for the office of trustees, you have a duty to learn your responsibilities to the township. I further submit that an audit to remedy this board's ignorance is a waste of tax dollars that would be better spent helping our neediest neighbors. In sum, I demand that the trustees cite specific statutory provisions in the township code that authorize their actions.
Next we'll consider ordinance ITO 12, Proposed Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for Town Purposes for the Year Ending March 31, 2013. The Township of Evanston Supervisor Treasurer recommends the City Council trustees approve the town of the City of Evanston budget for the year ending March 31, 2013. This is the second reading of the proposed ordinance. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance ITO 12, the Proposed Budget and Appropriate Ordinance for Town Purposes for the Year Ending March 31, 2013. Seeing no one wishing further discussions, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Nguyen.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Holmes.
Aye.
Trustee Tindham.
Aye.
Trustee Rainey.
No.
Trustee Burrus.
No.
Trustee Fisk.
Aye.
Trustee Braithwaite.
Aye.
Six to two.
Six to two. The ordinance passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn the township board meeting?
Move to adjourn.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. City clerk, would you call the roll for the city council meeting? And could someone give me the sign-up sheet? Thank you.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burrus.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero. We have a quorum. Welcome to the city council meeting of Monday, June 11, 2012.
You have no comments on agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. The first item on the agenda is mayor's public announcements. There is one, I'm not going to read everything that I already read about citizen comment, but I do have one further statement to make on citizen comment. The city's Board of Ethics concluded its independent investigation and determined Alderman Fisk did not have a conflict of interest regarding the Kendall matter. Pursuant to Council Rule 6.4, that matter is concluded and is beyond the jurisdiction of the council. All further redundant comments made on this subject made by any speaker will be ruled out of order. No further redundant or duplicative comment, such comment which has gone on for over 16 months, will be heard on the Kendall matter at this or any other council meeting. This ruling is in accordance with the council rules, the holding of the U.S. Supreme Court and Perry Education Association versus Perry Local Educators Association, and Section 206-G of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. City manager, do you have public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have a few. As you all know, we have a new viaduct on Greenleaf. It worked out. Worked out very well. There are, of course, many people to thank, and I know there will be a press conference before the next group of viaducts go up. But certainly, from a coordination standpoint, working with CTA and the contractor, I'd like to recognize Matt Swankowski for his excellent work in working through all the issues. And as you also know, we put up a webcam to allow our residents to follow the progress, and would like to thank Autobahn for their assistance in making that possible, and our citizen engagement division manager Erica Storley, who worked on all the logistics. So, best I can tell, everything went as planned and on schedule. We're looking at a few weeks from now, the weekend of the 23rd, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, for the final installation of the remaining two viaducts, so that project is moving forward. Next, I'd like to call on our Director of Health, Evanda Thomas, to come up and give a plug for our upcoming health summit.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, Clerk Green, City Manager Bob Kletz. I'm Evanda Thomas, the Health Director for Evanston Health Department. The City of Evanston's Health Department will be hosting our second annual health summit on Wednesday, June 27, 2012. The summit will serve as an opportunity to connect healthcare consumers and healthcare providers in Evanston community. The event will be held from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. in the Linden Room of the Levy Center, located at 300 Dodge Avenue. The public is really encouraged to come out to this free event, so please RSVP by June 18th, so we have an idea of how many members will show. Call the health office of the director at 847-866-2951, or email Nicola White. Join us for our second annual health summit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Madam Mayor, members of the council, summer is upon us, and we have many events happening, and I want to just cover a few of them that will be occurring between now and just next week. The Central Street Green Market is now open on Wednesdays through October 31st. Hours are 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Market's located at the intersection of Central Street and Stewart Street, two blocks west of Green Bay Road. The Ridgeville Farmers Market is also open now, Wednesdays through October 10th. Hours are 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then the West Side Market at Dempster, excuse me, at Church and Dodge is also opening, and we would encourage everyone to go to these markets. The West End Market is open on Saturdays from 8:30 to 3:00. It's located at the intersection of Church and Dodge. In addition, we are beginning our cultural arts division's Free Starlight Concerts. The first is this coming Thursday from 7:30 to 9:00 at James Park. The concert series kicks off with the Wacko Brothers, who are an alternative country rock band from Chicago, and that will begin a whole series of concerts, and we would encourage folks to, is it Waco Brothers? All right. Something about sitting in this chair and wacko, I'm sorry. Waco, Waco Brothers. Thank you, Alderman Fisk and Alderman Wilson. The Waco Brothers. How do I follow that? All right. From that, we then go to the Northwestern University commencement, which is, the main ceremonies are being held on Friday morning at Ryan Field, with satellite ceremonies held on Friday and Saturday. We'd encourage folks to look at the Northwestern University website for information about that. And Madam Mayor, I believe those cover the main issues over the coming week. The next big citywide event would then be in two weeks, on Saturday and Sunday, the 23rd and 24th, the Fountain Square Art Festival. And then, of course, I did skip one, and that is actually two. The Custer Fair is this weekend at Main and Chicago, and then the Ricky Birdsong Race Against Hate is along Sheridan Road on Sunday morning. So, many, many events happening in Evanston over the next several days, and will continue throughout the summer. We'd encourage folks to check out our website, cityovevanston.org, for all the details. They can go on our Facebook page, which I'm happy to report today, we've gone over 4,000 likes on our Facebook page. So, we have a lot of folks using Facebook to keep abreast of what's going on with the city. So, all those places are places people can get additional information on a very busy summer here in the city of Evanston. That's all I have.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have communications for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one communication from Peggy Tar, who could not be here tonight, but she sent me an email, and I placed a copy on Alderman's desk. It's just that she wants to bring attention to a concern of a business on 900 block of Sherman Avenue. That's all I have for the day.
Thank you. Next is citizen comment. We have two speakers on non-agenda topics, Padma Rao and BK Rao.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. When I received my most recent bill from ComEd, it included an insert with an article entitled "Money Doesn't Grow on Trees, But Energy Savings Can." It says, quote, "Did you know trees could actually help lower your energy bills? According to the U.S. Department of Energy, landscaping with trees can save you enough energy to pay back your initial investment in less than eight years. Trees, especially those that lose their leaves in the winter, allow the sun to help heat your home during chilly months. Fully leafed trees can reduce surrounding air temperatures, making your home much more comfortable during hot summer months. For more information about planting the right tree in the right place and tree safety around power lines, visit comed.com/trees." This council has at times criticized ComEd for one matter or another, yet ComEd clearly recognizes the importance and positive impact of mature trees. I submit that this council's vote to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death at Kendall, and without considering the ecological-
That is beyond the jurisdiction of the council.
It is not beyond the jurisdiction. You can undo your own- My attorney explained to you before the state law that is involved and the U.S. Supreme Court's decision. Every taxpayer's right to demand that their public officials comply with their own city code, with state law, and with the U.S. Constitution. You have no right to turn off the microphone just because you don't like the speaker or the message. You public officials took a vote and did something that affects the taxpayers. There is a First Amendment right to object to improper government-
Not the reason that I turned it off, as I explained to you in my previous remarks.
You explained nothing. You made a conclusionary statement that you don't want to hear about, something that you all did. Well, too bad. It affects the taxpayers legally and inter- Otherwise, why would you do that? Why do you have to stifle First Amendment rights? Why do you have to stifle rights of our citizens, of our government, to just follow the city's law?
After 16 months of this discussion, it is redundant.
After 16 months of you ignoring, interfering with our public comment, it's not done. It's not done. It's not done. Just because you don't want to hear it doesn't change the fact that the taxpayer still has the right to discuss it. You may have some anim-
Three minutes are up.
No, because you argue, because you turn-
You have heard my ruling. The microphone is not going back on.
It should go back on. Why not? Because you don't want to hear-
If you want the microphone back on, please let the next speaker speak. Your three minutes are over.
No, they are not, because you interrupted and you interfered. It is improper. It is like a dictatorship.
I am concerned not with how this looks to you, but with redundant comments. 16, 16 months of redundant comments are over. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is BK Rao's turn to speak.
She's waiting for the lawyer.
There are no more speakers.
Was I called?
Yes, you've been called twice.
Should I have to identify myself?
Would you please?
Okay. BK Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments are approved by my attorney. My comments are also backed by facts that I gathered from city documents, newspapers, and books. Fact. Kendall Plan involves killing over two dozen mature trees for no reason.
Ms. Rao, that has already been ruled as a redundant statement. We've heard 16 months of Kendall trees.
Is redundant to who? It is not redundant to me, because nothing is resolved. It is not over until it is over. It is not over for me. It is still in the making. You don't do anything about it. I have been saying and saying and saying. You have ears, but you don't listen. You have sight, but you don't see. You have heart, but you don't react that way. You pass your own resolution after resolution after resolution. With what explanation? What authority? You are a mayor, not a dictator, but you are acting like that. Do you want me to proceed, or you will say, arguing like this, say, at the end, oh, your three minutes are over? Why do you have to interrupt? Because this particular thing is an all but ruse for you. You don't want to face it. You don't want to listen to it. You don't want to do nothing. You don't want to hide under a bed and hope to God it will be over. It will not be over until it is over. When will it be over? There should be a happy ending. You are not interested in making anybody happy, including yourself. And the way things are happening, you are creating things one after the other. You are accusing people of attacking. Did you see what happened here? I was standing here. One of your members almost walked over me. If that is not an attack, I am 74 years old, a lot older than all of you. But I stand there, freely, next to my daughter, praying to God nobody will do something to her, and then she walks over me, and then there is that way to go. There is this way to go. When my daughter was talking over there, she nearly knocked my daughter out. You think that is not attack? Then you, you, argument after argument, you take time after time after time.
Point of order, point of order. Madam Mayor, this woman is hysterical and having hallucinations. Could you please put a stop to it? I am not going to sit here. I had to go to the ladies' room. I walked past her. I never touched her. I, I think you need to put a stop to this.
Alderman Rainey, I saw you walk out of here, and you did not touch or bump or do anything to anyone.
Because I don't want to listen to you.
She went that way, then my daughter was there.
Ms. Rao, it is all on television. It is all on television.
She is accusing me of something that I am not. I may be old, but my mind is still sharp.
You will be able to watch on television Alderman Rainey walking out.
But the woman that went over to walk another senior woman, she is the one who lost her mind 20 years, and she doesn't know anything. She got a lot of hard-
Your three minutes are over.
But- See, that's what you do. You must start arguing, and then you say your three minutes are over. Like I said, you are hiding under the bed because you don't want to face the truth.
Take her out. Come on, you gotta take her out.
You see? The truth is going to get you.
Thank you, Ms. Rao. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda? Thank you. All right. The consent agenda is as follows. We ask your approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 21, and the approval of the regular council meeting minutes of May 29. Under Administration and Public Works, our committee met tonight, and we ask your approval for the payroll through May 20th in the amount of $2,704,051.33. The City of Evanston bills through June 12 in the amount of $5,892,681.27. Madam Mayor, we have a correction on the credit card activity through April 30. It's reduced by $106.24. We're holding that bill. The amount we're asking approval for is $121,701.33. The committee asks your approval of a contract award to Jasco Electric Corporation for the 2012 Sherman Garage Light Pole Project in the amount of $56,720. The committee also asks your approval to place the December 31, 2011 GASB 45 Other Post-Employment Benefits Report on file. It's part of the annual financial report, and is required, the city is required to provide an evaluation of the total liability of all other post-employment benefits. Next, we ask your approval of the Resolution 25-R-12, which authorizes the release of the closed session minutes, meeting minutes listed in Exhibit A, and finding that it still, a need still exists for confidentiality as to the minutes exhibited in B. So, those are not being released at this time. The committee recommends the approval for the city manager to negotiate the acquisition of real property at 1801-05. This is off the consent agenda, sorry. Yes, and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next is, the committee recommends approval to amend the fiscal year 2012 budget, which would increase the FY 2012 budget appropriation by $8,763,000 from 250, oh, let's see. This is the one that has the amendment, correct, committee? Committee chair?
Forty-five dash R dash 12.
Um, wait. No, no. No, no. Forty-four R dash 12 has an amendment to it adding $300,000 to the total.
Reducing.
I mean, reducing. You're right. Reducing the, right, the, okay. So, anyway, where am I here? Appropriation by, increase the budget appropriation by, is it 8,400? Is that where I reduce it from?
Yes.
Okay. All right. 463,000 from 250,096,993, I'm sorry, to 200 and, 260-
Fifty-eight.
But it shouldn't be 62, adding four? No? I mean, adding three, okay. Whatever. Could we have a note on that? And we'll do it at the end. I'll take it off the consent agenda. Next is Resolution, I'm really sorry. Resolution 45-R-12. We recommend your approval of this resolution, which amends the FY 2012 CIP program. The proposed resolution would increase the 2012 CIP by $4,613,000 from $36,783,358 to the new total of $41,396,358. The committee asks your approval of Resolution 47-R-12 relating to the prevailing wage for public works projects in Cook County, as established by the Department of Labor. This is a housekeeping provision. Next, we ask your approval for appointing the Assistant City Manager Treasurer Marty Lyons as the city's delegate to the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative, and Human Resources Division Manager Cheryl Shakoo as the alternate delegate. We ask your approval, let's see, let's see, Resolution 12-R-12 regarding Howard Hartree Tiff Surplus Distribution. TIF surplus distribution. Staff recommends and the committee recommends council approve Resolution 12R-12 declaring a surplus of, this was amended, $1.0 million from the Howard Hartree Tax Increment Financing District at the end of fiscal year 2012. This item is for action tonight. That is the amendment that we were referring to earlier. Next is ordinance, this is for introduction, Ordinance 58012, designation of the proposed Chicago Main Tax Increment Financing District is off, it's not for introduction, it's off the consent agenda, and the chair will address its status at this time. Next is Ordinance 65012, amending portions of Title III Hotel Motel Tax. This is for introduction, and this really establishes, codifies the practice that we're currently operating under. Next is Ordinance 50012, amending Title X Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter 11, prohibited parking to add Lincoln Street, South Side, Sheridan Road, East to Campus Drive. This is for action tonight. Next, for action also, the council recommends, the committee recommends council approval of 51012, amending Title X Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 11, Traffic Schedules, Section 9, prohibited parking during certain hours on Davis Street. Next is the sale of surplus property. We ask your approval, and this is for action tonight, of Ordinance 45012, authorizing the manager to publicly offer for sale various vehicles and equipment owned by the City of Evanston through public auction. Next is Ordinance 54012, having to do with the lease of Room 1030 at the Civic Center to the League of Women Voters. We're asking you to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the three-year lease. Next, this is a tax increment redevelopment plan. It's off the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And does that also mean that Ordinance 56012, also having to do with the redevelopment project, is off the consent agenda?
Yes.
I'm waiting, okay. And then what about, then that would mean A20 is also off, is that correct? I just want to make sure. Next, under Planning and Development Committee, the committee met this evening and recommends the adoption of Ordinance 60012, granting a special use permit for the operation of a type-two restaurant known as Blues at 1806 Church. This is for introduction. The committee chair will address suspension of the rules and further action. Next is Ordinance 38012. This is off the consent agenda. It is, it's for introduction, and there were several amendments, and I'm asking that it be off the consent agenda. Next is Ordinance 39012, which has to do with amending portions of the zoning ordinance relating to home occupations, and that is off the consent agenda. Under Human Services, approval of the Township of Evanston May 2012 Payroll and Bills in the amount of $112,354.40. It's for action.
Forty-eight cents.
Forty, I beg your pardon, forty-eight cents. H2 is Resolution 39R-12, having to do with the Noise Cultural Arts Center. This is a request to authorize the city manager to adjust tenant lease conditions at the center, at the center as of January 1, 2013, addressing funding of future capital projects at the center and recognition of the Noise Tenant Association. Under Economic Development, we ask your approval, the committee asks your approval of the facade improvement program application for Unicorn Cafe at 1732 Sherman Avenue in the amount not to exceed $1,050. Approval is requested also for financial assistance through the facade improvement program for Coy Restaurant at 624 Davis Street in the amount of $1,975. This will be funded not through the Economic Development Fund, but through the Washington National TIF Increment Financing Fund. Resolution 48R-12 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. Under Appointments, Madam Mayor requests our approval for the Arts Council, Carol Bass, Dino Robinson, Jacqueline Williams, and Cedric Young. Board of Ethics, Kelda Harris-Harty. Housing Commission, Suzanne Calder and Sidney Castleberry. With that, Madam Mayor concludes the consent agenda, and I move approval.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, seeing no lights on for discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Gropp Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite? Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris, could we have Administration and Public Works?
Yes. The committee asks your approval of Resolution 38-R-12, authorizing the acquisition of real property located at 1801 to 1805 Church Street through condemnation or other means. I ask for this to be off the consent agenda. I do not believe we should be buying property that has such environmental remediation concerns and that we have limited ability to then remarket this land because of the environmental
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to that? Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the, the negotiation or the lack of it and our inability to be assured that this transaction can actually take place based on commitment by certain parties. However, I have since learned since our meeting that there is a promise to do right by this whole effort, and so I'm, I'm going to support this only because I believe that this is just a request to allow for negotiating and nothing more. And I hope it all goes well, and good luck. So I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, did you move this?
I'm sorry, yes, I need to move it.
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to discuss it? Then I think, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Seven to one, the motion passes.
A7, I want to give the correct numbers for Resolution 44-R-12, amending fiscal year 2012 City of Evanston budget. The number should read, the proposed amendment would increase the fiscal year 2012 budget appropriation by $8,463,000 from $250,096,993 to $258,559,993. I just wanted to, it was already on the consent, but I wanted to clarify
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
those numbers. I'm, sorry, we took it off. I, I move to approve A7.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2012 City of Evanston budget. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Just simple number?
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes.
Also, A11, the amendment for Resolution 12-R-12 regarding Howard Hartree TIF surplus distribution.
Is that right?
Just wanted to ensure, staff recommends the city council approve Resolution 12-R, declaring a surplus of 1 million from the Howard Hartree Tax Increment Financing?
I did that correctly.
Okay, never mind.
A12 is off.
Okay. A12. Ordinance 58-O-12 for designation of the proposed Chicago Main Tax Increment Financing District, and that will be addressed by Alderman Wynn?
I just wanted to let you. Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, at ANPW, I requested that this item be removed from the agenda entirely. During discussions with merchants and other stakeholders, we have developed some excellent ideas on changing the map boundaries, and according to our corporation council, the best way to address this is to withdraw the item and start, determine the correct map that we want to have, and then start again.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, does that...
I need to move to take it off the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove it from the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Sorry. A18, the committee asks your approval of Ordinance 55-O-12, approving a tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Dempster Dodge redevelopment area. I move approval, but not really.
It's been moved and seconded.
I asked this to be removed from the consent agenda, as well as others on the council. I do not believe that this is an appropriate use of TIF funds. It does not meet their criteria, and I'm also concerned that, I'm not sure that it actually meets legal state statute on having a, there's no really redevelopment plan. There's a technical plan and there's, there's, there's financing explains why they're saying that it meets the criteria, but I do not see a redevelopment plan. And I would like the council, corporation council, and the community development office to actually look at the state statute, statute about creating TIFs, because I'm not sure that we're meeting their requirement.
Thank you, Alderman Tindham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too am uncomfortable with this TIF proposal at this time. I was on the committee to, on the combined, the joint committee that did pass this on to council with a lot of, with not many objections, except I did raise the question then, and I'm still raising the question now, is what is the success, and I guess I'm just not familiar with, the TIF with one owner, one parcel? That's the thing that has me most concerned, is the limited negotiation, the limited number of people or players in this, in this whole thing. And I'm just not comfortable with that as, as a basis for a TIF.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes, did you have your light on for...
Well, I did. I just would say that I would, I am certainly comfortable with trying to develop a TIF in that area. I just would think that we maybe need, have some more information, and I would just like to table it or hold it until we can get that additional information if
Second.
we get a second on that.
Second.
Let's, table or hold?
I'm looking to supply some directions from the Alderman of the ward in terms of where he'd like to go with that.
Could you tell us what additional information you want to?
Well, one of my concerns has been the whole issue of the parking with Dominick's, and I brought this up when we had the presentation. That was one of the things that I was concerned about in terms of, I believe that in order to make that center really function and not to have some of the same kinds of, of good, I want to say good vendors or good merchants that we've had there to leave, we've got to have some kind of, of understanding of having some kind of family-oriented, I want to say, I hate to use the word entertainment, but something that would draw families and children, maybe something similar to a Dave and Buster's. Of course, you know my preferences of bowling alley, but something similar to that. And I would just like to make sure that we could be assured from Dominick's that they would not object to that kind of, 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 of a thing being there. And I understand from the Alderman that there is going to be a meeting with Dominick's, and I just would like to wait until after that meeting to see where they are. That would be my reason for wanting to hold it.
My preference would be to go into that meeting knowing that we had a TIF, but Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the good thing to Alderman Burris, we do have Scott N. Beiner, who is one of the owners represented here at the meeting. We also have our consultants to answer the question of redevelopment, and also hopefully they're prepared to answer the question regarding the one parcel. In response to Alderman Holmes, I think regardless of whether Dominick's chooses to agree to a bowling alley or family entertainment, we still have to move forward with that area. And I think you would agree with me, and I know we share the same passion for redevelopment on the West Side. And I would agree with the mayor that by having a TIF in place, that that would give us even more leverage to be able to deal with those, those issues. My other point is economic development is number one priority, not only for myself, but also everyone here on this council. I don't think I would get too many arguments there. I firmly support the TIF, and the TIF is a tool to bring about that economic change that has been very much needed, not only in the West Side of Evanston, but for that particular parcel. This, we've, to my understanding, the, and based on the consultant's report, that it does meet the requirements. To my understanding, and I was present for the joint board, review board, that we have the full support of, of all the entities that we need to check through. And also through my understanding participation, we've had several meetings with our neighborhood groups in a ward meeting, and also Leadership Evanston that represents the broader Evanston community was very involved with this process. So I can only hope at the end of night that we will vote and it will pass, and that it will bring the economic development that we need desperately in that area of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. Did you want to hear from the consultants, Alderman Burris, to answer your concerns?
Yes, and I just want to be clear, a verbal answer about the plans for redevelopment is not a require, does not meet the requirement of a redevelopment plan. It's something, and I would actually like to hear from the consultant about the, the state statute about having a redevelopment plan as part of it. I know we talked before the meeting, and would love to hear your comments on record.
Thank you. Bobberchlicky with... Bobberchlicky with K. McKenna, City's TIF consultant. From the standpoint in our professional review of not only this TIF plan, but also for other communities that we've worked on, the term redevelopment plan and project basically refers to a series of items that have to be contained within the plan from a technical standpoint. Just to identify a few, and they're, and they're basically set forth in the table of contents of the TIF plan into seven or eight major sections. The redevelopment plan must contain a legal description as well as a map. It must identify proposed land uses as well as existing land uses. There has to be a budget conformant with the requirements of the Act in which only certain items are allowed to be included in that budget. There has to be a statement of what the base equalized assessed valuation is. The redevelopment plan also sets forth what, at the end of the day, based upon projections, what the projected equalized assessed valuation is. There's requirements in the plan as it relates to sources of funding, sources of financing. There's also requirements as it relates to commitment for affirmative action, and also a series of goals and objectives that are set forth in the redevelopment plan. Based on our experience, and again, each community, each area has, is a case-by-case basis, but those are the core elements that have to be in the plan. I think from the standpoint of the requirements, in our opinion, and not only for this plan, but other plans that we've worked on with the city, the inclusion of those core elements and satisfaction of the statute would constitute a basis for redevelopment plan and in order to be in conformance with state statute.
Alderman Burris, does that answer your question?
Absolutely not. I, there is no redevelopment plan. You're, you stated things that are part of getting it to be, it... You're, you stated things that are part of getting it to be, to be your justification for it, but not what you plan to do with it. Have you ever, has your firm developed a plan, or gone for a tax increment financing district, when there's nothing, there's no plan going forward on what you plan to do in that district, and it was a one parcel, one owner, and had already been redeveloped, already developed?
I think, and again, this is not an exhaustive list-
Okay, I, I, one, one parcel, one owner, already developed.
Right. I think, and again, it wasn't an exhaustive list, but we had identified, I think there were 24, 25 projects that we had been involved in over the years for properties that had been redeveloped, so they were improved, and I have to be honest with you, in some cases it might have been two owners, I mean, just because of the coincidence of the properties, but no more than that, and they were also TIF designations associated with that.
So the TIF was one parcel?
It was either, again, in some cases it was one parcel. I think the Arlington Heights and the Hoffman Estates, which we had on that list, was actually two parcels for each, for each. But in, there are several of those that were identified-
I had, I had asked you for those two weeks ago, and I do not believe that we ever received that documentation, and I, at the time, I believe you said that you hadn't, the one parcel, one owner, and an already redeveloped site. You actually gave information about sites that were, had not been developed, and the TIF was used to develop them. And in these, these one parcel, one owner sites as well, did, was there a plan for redeveloping of the already developed site? Was there, was it planned to be demolished? And then developed into something else, or was the plan to only enhance the ability of the owner to bring in new tenants?
It was actually a combination. It depended on the case-by-case. In some cases, I was saying, the majority of those 24, 25 that we had identified, in the majority of those cases, it was for continued reuse of the property for the same use.
Did you give that list to Mr. Griffin, or Ms. Razovich?
Right, it was, and I think it was, I thought it was in a memo from a couple meetings ago. It was a Kane McKenna memo, which was attached to staff memo.
Was there, was there a whole list of one parcel, one site?
Yes.
I don't remember seeing the memo, but not to say that, that's not there.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Razovich. I'm the Economic Development Division Manager. As part of the entire packet for these three items, in the current packet, it's 329.
Okay.
Was the list that was provided to us by Kane McKenna?
Oh, no, these are not already developed sites. This is not true. This is not, these are not, this is not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for-
Well, I'm sorry.
Very, I'm looking for one parcel, one site, not an already completely developed.
Well-
That's not what I'm seeing here.
Well, just as an example, Arlington Heights, TIF 5, those are developed shopping centers. They were in place and basically continued to be reused as shopping centers. And there was a TIF redevelopment note associated with that. Aurora Bel Gale was a small, it was an industrial site of about 16 acres. Part of the building was kept for industrial, and then the remainder was demolished, and then a small business park went around the core area. And again, that was just one owner.
Okay.
Berwin-Sermack Plaza, that was the shopping center at Sermack, which was the utilization of a Myers project.
And was there a plan for the redevelopment of what they planned on doing?
In, in, in those first three cases, they, there was a consultation involvement of the developer, in which there was a re, we, it was determined that there was going to be a continuation of that use. The amount of detail associated with, for example, new tenants, exactly how much was going to be redeveloped and when, had not all been spelled out at the outset. Some of that was subject to negotiation over time, as well as information that was to be provided over a series of negotiations. So I, if I understand your question, the actual, all the ayes dotted, all the tees crossed as it related to, you know, was Bed Bath &amp; Beyond going to come in, or, you know, Target or Meyer? That had not all been worked out at the outset. But the idea was, it was going to continue as retail, or continue as commercial, and the Bel Gale continue as industrial, and it was going to be, the TIF was going to be the financing part that, again, subject to review of the financials, it could be utilized.
And I, and actually, one two-part question left. I, I still disagree that these aren't, I know these, these aren't, they're not, I do not believe similar, as similar as you're making it out to be, but two questions. The first being, with these sites that you're, most recent site that you're trying to equate, when the redevelopment, did the city have to go out and bond to get the money to actually do the redevelopment before they started? So the city, the city are, went into more debt to bond? And second question is, have you been asked about bonding on this particular site for the city, because we know the increment will not be coming in soon? My concern is that we're going to, we're going to, well, the majority of the council's going to approve this TIF, we're not going to have the funds immediately, the city will then say, well, we'll get them eventually, we're going to bond and then go into more debt in order to do, help the, the new owner basically lower rents.
I'm with-
My second part of my concern.
Okay, well, I'll answer the second part first. We have not been asked about bonding. I think our recommendation heretofore, again, subject to further review of the financials, has been for a performance-based contract or pay-as-you-go has been the, at least the initial volley that's been, you know, tendered across. And with respect to these projects, for the greater part, most of these projects were, did not involve upfront funding. Again, these were the Kane McKenna projects that we had been involved in. If there was funding involved for, for many of these projects, it had to do with the issuance of a developer note, but it wasn't upfront. The developer was required to reimburse, I'm sorry, to advance the monies, and then was reimbursed over time as TIF money came in. I mean, there are cases where bonds have been issued, in fact, the city on several projects, in terms of Howard Hartree, in terms of the downtown TIF project, had issued bonds in the past. Here to say, you know, they've been repaid, you know, been repaid, again, through conservative underwriting. But in terms of any specifics, as to the requirement for the Dempster Dodge area or the Evanston Plaza, we have not had the bonding idea come up yet.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Thank you. I have a lot of enough, if not all of the same concerns and reservations, but there's a distinction between meeting the minimum technical requirements in my mind and meeting my expectations. And I expect this property and project to be a quality product. And the plan, to me, is just simply, it's not a plan. It doesn't tell me what this is going to look like at the end, it's not going, it doesn't tell me what it's going to look like in the middle, and it doesn't even tell me what it's going to look like at the start. We don't have a sense, I don't have a sense of what the upfront dollar commitment's going to be. It might be $100,000, it could be $5 million. There's just nothing that tells me that. The budget that's been provided, again, the statutory minimum requirements are one thing, but my expectations are different. I expect to see a pretty good idea of what we're going to spend on what, and the budget, to me, seems like it's not really tied to anything concrete, because again, we don't have a picture of where this is going or what it's going to be. Without a specific plan, I just, I can't support it. Again, I've, I've stressed before, I live in the neighborhood, I shop at the grocery store, I'm at the shopping center all the time, virtually on a daily basis. And it needs help, but this doesn't meet my expectations, and I want something that's going to meet those expectations, and then I'm going to feel comfortable, and then I can go back to my constituents and say, this is a plan, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to do for you, and we're going to get results for you. And this doesn't do that. You know, I, I was talking to some people over the weekend, and someone dropped some chicken eggs off for me, and it reminded me of how much, how much time we spent on the, on the chicken plans. And, and we got more plans for the chicken coops, I feel like, than, than what we've got here, and this is $23 million. So again, it might meet technical requirements, it might meet minimum requirements, but it doesn't meet my expectations for a quality product. And I'm not saying you're a work product, per se, I'm talking about the plan. The plan doesn't meet my expectations for where we're going with the shopping center.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
I guess I just had- Two quick questions. Unfortunately, I was on the council when the first West Evanston TIF passed, but just, if someone can help me understand, if the 2007 West End TIF redevelopment document that's, that's online right now, did that come before or after the TIF?
The what?
There was a 2007 plan, did that-
Was that, was that master plan?
That went on for years.
That was started in 2002. It wasn't completed until later.
2007, okay. And then, just another point of clarification to Alderman Burris's question, so I think she had asked for one example of the parse, one example of one single project or single parcel, and just so, for pointing clarification for those that are paying attention on page 329, I actually counted 24 samples of single parcels. So just, I just wanted to answer that question, and then-
Mr. Alderman Braithwaite has the mic.
Thank you. And then to your other question of what, I don't know who had the conversation, I did not have a conversation about bonding for, for, for debt, and I think you answered that question very well, and I don't know if that needs to be restated, but I feel like you at least addressed her two concerns, maybe not. So Alderman Wilson, I also have eye expectation for, for that area, as, I also shop there on a, on a, on a weekly basis, and I'm not sure where the comparison to the, the chicken and the eggs, and how that relates to what we're discussing right now, but again, I'm in full support of, of using the TIF as a tool, and it's, and it's my understanding that, that moving forward, the council still will have an opportunity to vote on, on, on any disbursement that, that goes out. So if there's any plan to come, whether it's today, tomorrow, we will still have to vote before any funds are dispersed, and we will still have to have a majority vote in order for those funds to be dispersed. So I'm, I'm, I'm almost ready to call the question, but I don't want to cut anyone off.
Well, Alderman Win hasn't-
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I didn't see him.
Thank you. And actually, Alderman Braithwaite, once you start speaking, you, you can't call the question, just, just to let you know.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. I was taught that lesson, I think in my third meeting at this council. I, I had some other issues about the main, in Chicago, TIF earlier today, and so I had asked staff to get me the documents of, from some prior TIFs, to figure out what, what were, what was in the redevelopment plan for those, those earlier prior TIFs. And I'm sitting here looking at the Howard and Ridge TIF, which has turned out to be, have a terrific building in it as its economic engine, as Alderman Rainey has demonstrated. But in that ordinance, in that document that, that we had, that we approved in, when was that, '04? I'm sorry, I don't have my reading glasses tonight. That document does not have a specific plan. It has the same type of projected cost estimates that this Dempster Dodge plan has in it. It is, does not describe that building that was built at 415 Howard. It describes the potential infrastructure improvements, it describes all the possible things that can, land acquisition, all the possible things that can happen under a TIF, but it doesn't provide the specific plan. And then ultimately, we went on and negotiated with Bristol, the builder of that large building at 415, and we, the city negotiated very carefully and approved the costs involved there. But these, these TIFs are, they're frameworks for us to then create the plan within them. We've done this before. I have confidence in Kane McKenna and our city staff. Our TIFs are not created willy-nilly, and if we look back through some of our TIFs, not all of them listed specifically what the plan was. In fact, the Research Park TIF, which occurred before I was on the council, was completely altered. What we have there now, the movie theater, which has turned out to be enormously successful, was not part of the original vision whatsoever. I mean, the, the council actually, it changed entirely its direction with, because the TIF was not happening, it was not going anywhere. And so whatever had been planned back in whatever year that was, 80, somewhere in the 80s-
'84.
Thank you. It didn't occur, it only partially occurred. And actually, when I joined the council was when the movie theater-
Right.
-deal occurred, and we negotiated every aspect of that, every parking lease, the, the movie theater deal, the, and the council sat here and nodded over and approved every aspect of, of the individual aspects of that plan. Objected to some, made modifications. But if you look at our past TIFs, their frameworks, you know, it could have been that we didn't do, if we had done nothing at the Research Park TIF, which, his name is escaping me right now. I mean, it would never, we might have just left it that way and let it expire. Fortunately, we didn't do that. So we're, what we're doing here is establishing a framework, and we don't have to do anything. What it does do is it provides us with an opportunity. So I'm supporting this. And now if someone else would put on their light and call the question, this would work.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, this is exactly the kind of project that will benefit from a TIF, exactly the kind. This list that, that Nancy showed us is loaded with obsolete shopping centers, former Kmart stores, et cetera, that whether they have one owner or not, it's a shopping center, usually they are owned or managed by one owner. You got a Bloomingdale's and a Fields or Macy's, whatever, but it, it's, if you want to call it one parcel, fine, but a shopping center, by virtue of definition, is multiple stores. I don't know who owns them. But that's exactly what this list shows. So this is not unusual at all, as far as I'm concerned. And the, the, one of the key phrases in TIFs, the, the success of TIFs is but for. But for this TIF, the 415 building, not a chance. But for this TIF, not a chance we would have the whole development. But for a TIF, you would not have Sherman Plaza. But for the TIF, you would not have the project that includes where Washington National Building was. That TIF was developed so that we could tear down that huge monstrosity of a building that was loaded with asbestos, that was loaded with everything that was totally illegal by the time we tore it down. And look what we got for that. It, it's just fantastic. The, we had, we had a whole plan for the Research Park. I didn't have it, because I didn't support it, but the plan was, it was going to be all wet labs and Research Park buildings, and, you know, Northwestern was going to participate. We bought, we bought two-thirds of the properties in, in a 23-acre site, two, well, we owned a third, we gave, we gave the third, we bought a third that was privately owned. And we did not buy those, thinking we were going to have a movie theater and a fabulous hotel and a wonderful parking garage. I mean, we thought we were going to have laboratories there. So the point is, but for this TIF, I believe sincerely that this shopping center is going to continue to deteriorate. I don't care who the new owner is, if we don't provide some support here, we're probably not going to get the kinds of things we want. Dominick's needs to be beat into submission. I don't know what their problem is, I believe they can see the error of their ways. They have, they have a huge sales tax rebate. They have not accomplished the threshold to receive that rebate in how many years? Two years, maybe? At least- At least not last year.
Right.
Now, there's a reason for that. And I think we can explain that to them. Why they're not getting that rebate. They're not selling the amount of food needed to, to generate the sales tax to get the rebate. Why? Because there's nobody in the shopping center. I mean, those of us who drive there, I guess, are unusual. I don't know. I mean, it should, you should have to wait in line there. You should have to fight for a parking space. You can park in any space in that lot, any time of the day or night. So I think, I think we might have created a little more, I, I think it's more mythical than real. I, I don't think that, I would like to see the proof, that because of Dominick's lease, some user or tenant has not been allowed to come to that shopping center. I, I, I don't believe that there's actual evidence that somebody was, was turned away. I know there's talk that, you know, a health club can't go there, you know? Well, I, I don't know about that. But I, that's not the kind of thing I'm looking to see at that shopping center. This is exactly what we need. If we don't have the votes tonight, Alderman Braithwaite, you need to wait. If, if we have the votes, fine. Otherwise, it should be tabled so that we can meet with, with Dominick's. There's no reason why we can't meet with them as a group, public meeting. Let's hear from them and, and move on. This, this has got to pass. This would be an absolute crime not to pass this TIF. I don't want to see it defeated tonight. So if you have, if you, if you have any hesitation about not having the votes, we should hold it.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Rainey and Alderman Winn, if, if you don't know by now how important it is to have your perspective over the years, I want to thank you for that because it's, for those of us who have been active in the community for a long time and have lived and participated in the discussion about some of these TIFs, they, they really do provide, as you mentioned, a very important framework to move, to move the work and the economic work of the city forward. I'm, I have absolute faith that this is going to work at Dempster Dodge. And I also have, I am absolutely convinced that without it, Dempster Dodge won't work. And I simply do not want to see that intersection that I think has so much potential just continue to wilt and, and die. As I said at the first meeting, I'm strongly in support of this. I have been convinced by various discussions that we have control over what's going to be happening, that the redevelopment plan is something that we will participate in. What's going to go in, we will participate in. And I feel very positive about not only supporting the TIF, but also the direction that we're moving in. And want to thank you both especially for your, for your words of wisdom and your perspective.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Alderman, your comment about the framework for development and things that previous councils have done, I think we can do better now. I, I think we, we have an opportunity to really have a more thought-out plan. But we also have the opportunity to use other economic development tools could be utilized at this site to assist parcel that do not commit us for 23 years. That is the issue. We're committing, I think your estimates were 20 million, it's almost a million dollars per year to one owner for one site. Just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me when we have other opportunities to use economic development to help this site. The other issue that I see is, recently read an article about Dominick's losing market share and closing stores. So that's also another, another issue of we're sort of catering around the Dominick's. I think that their market share is now at 9%, I believe, reading. I don't know the exact number, but it's in that ballpark. But we're, we're creating, basically take, take care to one owner and we're working around a store that may or may not be there. Again, I think this is a, a bad precedent to set. And I would be shocked if we're not back here asking for bonded money to go more in debt.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Well, again, I want to say I'm certainly in support of a TIF, and I hope that's clear. I'm just not in terms of the timing right now. And I, I too want to just echo what Alderman Rainey said, that, you know, I would rather see all of us be on the same page and pass this with a large majority vote because we all need to work on it. It's going to be a benefit for the whole city of Evanston, not just for Dempster Dodge area. It, a lot of people shop at Dominick's from all over the city. And that's what we have there now, basically, is the Dominick's. I mean, except the Dance Studio, which a lot of people go to. I know Panini's there and, is there and as well as the clothing store. I can't think of the name right now. But I would just rather see us wait. And, and, and the reason why I say, Alderman Rainey, about Dominick's lease is, I believe I am correct, I don't want to just quote someone, but I believe it was the new owner who said that. There were parts in the, in the lease that, you know, and I just think that we need to know about those parts in that lease. If it can't be a bowling alley, if it can't be a Dave Buster kind of thing, if it can't be a health club, if it can't be a movie theater, what can be there that will attract families to bring in more traffic? We should be attracting Northwestern students over there and students from the high school who are just right down the street coming through there with, with just foot traffic to make that shopping center just really bloom. And that's all I'm asking, is that we just wait until we can do that. Not, I would hate to vote, you know, and not have the TIF pass. That's my position on it.
Alderman Holmes, I have one question for you. Are you saying that we should not vote for the TIF until after we've talked with Dominick's? Because since I'm part, supposed to be part of that discussion, I would prefer talking with Dominick's after the TIF had passed because I think that would give us some options of things we could offer to do in the shopping center that, that would do what you and I both want, which is to get the bowling alley to be a permitted use in that shopping center.
But we don't, if, unless we know exactly what's in that lease and what they're willing to negotiate, Mayor, I don't know, offering them something about the TIF is not something that I'm interested in. I'm just trying to see what the TIF is going to do for other folk, not necessarily for Dominick's. They're going to be there unless they're going to go out of business. I think that they will continue to be there.
I'm offering them other foot traffic to increase their business. But anyway.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I, you know, any talk of, of diminishing Dominick's in any way scares the heck out of me because that is the mainstay of that shopping center. We should do everything to support them, to make them as profitable as humanly possible. What, I realize, Alderman Holmes, that there are things in their lease that restrict uses that take up lots of parking. That's what I want to talk to them about. That, that's ridiculous. When they came there, they probably thought thousands of people would be coming there to shop. You, speaking of bowling alley, you could roll a bowling ball through that parking lot at any time of the day.
Sure could.
And not hit anyone. And not hit anything. So they, you know, they need to get over themselves on that score.
Absolutely.
And that's what we need to sit down and talk to them. Now, I think, Madam Mayor, that it, it would be, and I'm ready to vote on this tonight, I'll vote for it, but I think it might be a mistake. I think it would be better to go to them and say, "Look, we are going to have all these tools that we can use to assist. But if you're not going to give a little, the council's not prepared to support a TIF." I, I just think that that's a negotiating tool. And I, I think Alderman Holmes means that, that she probably won't support this if Dominick's won't give a little. And I think to be able to go out to the market and say to a bowling alley or to a, a club or to whatever things take up a lot of parking, I, I don't even know what they are. God forbid, I hope we get some of them. But they, we couldn't even go out and, and offer this property up to those kinds of places if this is such a rigid condition in their lease. I see this TIF helping in this way. I see this TIF helping in demolition over there. Some of that stuff needs to be demolished. That stuff back there by the Frank's Nursery, I, I see lots of parking back there, but you can't get to it because there's a building there. So I, I see all ways of reorganizing the shopping center so that it is very successful. We need to have a TIF to do it. Whether we get it tonight or in two weeks or in four weeks, I don't think it probably matters as long as we're on the right track.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
And hopefully, we can accomplish both this evening. I would agree very much with, with the mayor. I think by having the TIF as a tool, that, that it would give us more leverage in that conversation. And again, whether or not Dominick's is playing ball, we still need to do something in that parcel of land. We still need to have economic development in the West End of Evanston. And so I'm hoping that, with that being said, that someone will call the question.
I make a motion to table.
It's been moved and seconded to table. Is that to a date certain or?
I would like to table until we know what's in the Dominick's lease. I don't know if we can get that as a date certain.
To meet with them.
To meet with them, to know. Mayor Tisdale, do you need an exact date? Can we put four, four weeks out with that? I'm looking at economic development. Can we meet with Dominick's, get that information and back to us within four weeks?
I have a que.
Can we maybe have a moment, the staff, to confer, if that's all right?
The lawyers. The advisors say, "Right, we'll do better with Dominick's if we pass the TIF because then we have jobs. And if we don't, we'll..." Are you going to vote for? Have you? Have you? And Judy, Melissa?
I think it's better to wait. I know.
I think, I think there needs to be a plan for this. I agree. But, but, no, no. But.
It's five to three.
I believe everybody is done conferring with everybody. So we have a motion to table before us. So I think we need to vote on that first. So on the motion to table, I think we can do a voice vote.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Is a motion to table different than a motion to hold?
Yes.
Yes.
Under the council's rules, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Alderman Winn. Delighted when I'm occasionally proved right in the parliamentary procedure. So we have a motion to table. I, I think City Clerk, why don't you call the roll so we're sure whose where?
Alderman Winn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
It's five to three.
Five to three, the motion to table wins. Alderman Burris, I think that leaves us with A19 and A20 unless the motion to table wants to be revised to cover all of them.
Yes. All right. A, we're asking the A19 and A20, the motion to table is revised to include A19 and A20. Do a roll call vote on that.
Let's just revote it, yes. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Winn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover? I mean, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite? Name six, five, I mean, five to three.
Five to three. Ordinances A18, A19, and A20 are tabled.
That's, that is my report.
Thank you. Alderman Burris. Alderman Holmes, could we have planning and development?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For P1, ordinance 60-0, I mean, 60-0-12, I would like to move suspension of the rules.
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll? To suspend the rules.
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
He's out. He votes aye.
I think we.
Send his word.
Seven, seven to nothing. The, the motion passes.
Okay. I would move ordinance 60-0-12 granting a special use for a type-two restaurant at 1806 Church Street Blues.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, for action, grant a special use for a type-two restaurant at 1806 Church Street Blues. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero, the motion passes.
Thank you. P2, Madam Mayor, ordinance 38-0-12, amending various portions of the city code relating to bread and breakfasts establishments. I would, this is for introduction. We had several, trying to find my notes, I'm sorry, several amendments that were recommended to the recommendation, to the motion. In the ordinance, there was, for distance, there was 700 feet, was moved to amended to three, 750 feet through a three to two vote. I'll just give it all to you and then we can go back and discuss them because Alderman Rainey wanted them done individually. For parking, there was a four to one vote in terms of making sure that the, in the presenting... For parking, there was a four to one vote in terms of making sure that the, in the presenting requests for bread and breakfasts, that they would have to have the number of spaces for the number of bedrooms for parking. The ordinance would have to, I mean, the partitioner would have to make sure that they had the number of parking spaces versus for the number of bedrooms that they had. And then, there was the, the next one was the elimination of any reference to using two-story buildings for bread and breakfasts.
Two flats.
Two flats, I'm sorry. Two flats, not two stories, two flats. I think that's all of them. And I think Alderman Rainey wanted to speak to them.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey? Madam Mayor, I'm very much opposed to the amendment regarding distance. And the amendment at the previous meeting was 500 feet from 1,000, and then this evening, Alderman Fisk moved 750, which passed three to two, or three to one, three to two. And I'd like, I'd like to move that the council vote on that amendment. And I'm not sure if we should do it tonight, or next meeting. I don't care when we do it, but I very much object to three people making the decision about 750 feet, when I support 500 feet. Thank you. Like, could I move to overturn that and restore it to the 500 feet?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to overturn that and restore it to 500 feet. Alderman Burris?
I was also going to agree with Alderman Rainey, and say that we should not have it at 750. I was even going to lower it more to, more like 250, but if the 500 is on the table, I will go with the 500. I still don't understand why we're having such concerns about this. And also, I have concerns about the parking, that number of spaces per number of bedrooms. We wouldn't ask that for anyone's home, and I have serious concerns with that as well.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Well, Madam Mayor, I was going to ask, because we don't have a full council here tonight, that we hold this over, and this is only for introduction tonight, that we hold it until the next meeting. We hold the issue until the next meeting.
All right. Alderman Tindham?
In the meantime, could we find out what the equivalent of 500 feet, 750 is, in terms of blocks, or?
There's a map there. It's part of the attachment, it's part of the book, it's part of the packet.
Great.
It shows you 500, and it shows you 1,000.
Okay.
So you did get a second to that, Alderman. Yes, thank you. So we have two Aldermen supporting it, so it is held.
Ordinance P-3, 39 dash, O dash, 12, amending portions of the zoning ordinance related to home occupations. I would move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 39012. Alderman Rainey? Yes, Madam Mayor. I know there are good landscapers and bad landscapers. In my ward, I have several wonderful landscapers that neighbors love. They have, there was one that neighbors didn't love, but there are two that neighbors love. This, this is, they take care of their vehicles, they have beautiful landscaping on their own property, they're wonderful neighbors, and I don't want to exclude them. And I know that Alderman Holmes has some very problematic home occupations that include landscapers, but I, I just think that we ought to have some standards, instead of just blanket eliminating home occupations. So I would like to, and also, I have some issues about a home occupation where there is no occupant of the home. In other words, that just business is conducted during the day, or during business hours, and not, there's nobody living there, you know? I mean, the issue with the bed and breakfast came up. Well, in order to have a bed, I mean, there's a person living there, whether they own the home or not, they're still living there 24 hours a day, and that's what I think our home occupations ought to require. And I think people are very surprised when they find out that you can have a home occupation in an R1 district where there's absolutely no one living there. I mean, I found this out very accidentally, and come to find out there's no requirement that somebody be a resident, or that there is a resident of that home. So I'd like to hold this until we get a little more information, and if we could apply some standards to home occupations, for example, the landscaping, if they're not a problem in the neighborhood, you know, maybe we could do it like chicken coops. You know, if you get five of your neighbors to say it's okay, then you can do it. I don't know. I really, I have no answer to this. I'm working on a few other things, but I don't have an answer to this, but I think it is totally unfair to say to somebody, "We know you have a good business, we know your neighbors love you, but you're on the list, and so we can't." We, you have, you know, we can't allow it. So I move to hold it. Is there a second? Oh, come on. There's, I'm sorry, there's no second. So it's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance 39012, amending portions of the zoning ordinance relating to home occupations. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Seven to one.
Seven to one, the ordinance passes.
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. We have nothing for human services. All right, beats me. Who's the Chair of Economic Development?
James.
Alderman Tindham, would you please do economic development? Thank you.
This is with regard to O-3.
Yes.
Resolution 48 dash, R dash, 12, authorizing the Technology Innovation Center, TIC, 2012 funding request. The Economic Development Committee and staff recommend approval of Resolution 48 R12, authorizing the city manager to execute the third modification to the funding agreement with Techno, Technology Innovation Center, and approve, approval of a $25,000 grant to the TIC for assistance with staffing and program costs for a three-month period, April 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2012. This is for action, that is my motion.
Is there a second? You all? Thank you. Alderman Rain, Alderman Burris?
Thank you, Mayor. I object again to giving money to the TIC. I have said this when we first, in economic development, approved this, and then gave the last installment. Well, I think a technology incubator in the city is a great idea. I just haven't seen where our, return on our investment is on this, and I've asked economic development for an update on what, where are the businesses moving out and into the city? How are we getting, the city getting something out of, for our money? And I've not seen that. I know, you know, Mr. Happa is running a nice place for businesses to go, but I just don't think we're actually running a incubator that's bringing businesses into the community, into regular business locations. So I cannot approve this.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass resolution 48 R12, authorizing the tech, Alderman Rainey?
Yes, you may still talk.
The one question that I continue to have is, back in the day, the city of Evanston and Northwestern University supported the Technology Center. All of a sudden, it was just the city of Evanston. I don't think, I would be surprised to find out one other organization where the city of Evanston was the only funder. Are there others like that? But that's sort of a rhetorical question. The question really is, why doesn't, what has been done to communicate with the university to get funding from the university? Isn't this just such a typical source to, for the university to fund? It just seems to me, I mean, you read, University of Michigan, Ohio State, they all fund technology centers, incubators, and I just can't understand why we're the only ones funding them. What do they know that we don't know? Well, I have raised the issue with Northwestern twice, and I will certainly raise it again. But do they, do they tell you anything? President Shapiro was relatively new and didn't know anything about it, and- Not new anymore? No. So I can raise it again. I think this will be the last time I'm supporting this, until they get other funding from the university. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Happa's here, and maybe he could clarify my, my memory. My understanding is, while the university and the city were partners in the research park, that the Technology Innovation Center received no money from the city, nor Northwestern University, for many years, and it's just the last few years, three years or so, that the city has participated. Is my memory sort of correct on that, Mr. Happa?
It was four years that I covered the incubator in the report that Mr. Zalmazak presented to the Economic Development Committee last two weeks ago, in Alderman Burris's absence. It was in the report that for four years after the city of Evanston and Northwestern University jointly backed out from the funding, that it was supported with other sources.
So the city and the university both provided funding then back in 2005, four? And what was the level of funding in 2004? Do you recall?
$76,000.
For each unit, for each entity, or total?
Total.
Thank you.
And the only other thing that I would say is that the city of Evanston is, while I understand what your point is, Alderman Rainey, at Northwestern, it, when we were named by Forbes.com two years ago as one of the top 10 incubators in the country, we were the only one out of 10 that did not have university support. So it's not a matter of what you don't know, that they do know, it's simply a matter of where Northwestern University decides to put their investment dollars. And I fully support that. But the one clarification I would like to make, is that the city of Evanston is not the only funder of the Technology Innovation Center. There are many others. That also was in the report that was presented to the Economic Development Committee and approved by an eight to one vote, when Alderman Grover was the chairman.
Are we the largest?
Pardon me?
We're not the largest.
We're not the largest funder, single funder?
We're the largest funder, but by no means the only funder.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, in the information provided by staff, the first payment of $25,000 is for, is what we're approving tonight, for April 1st through June 30th, but the remaining $50,000 would be paid upon the staff recommendation. And then there's a list of what the TIC needs to-
This is the second $25,000?
This is the second $25,000? Okay, but it's the same date, it's April 1st, 2012 through June 30th.
No, and Alderman Fisk, members of the council, there was a $25,000 increment approved for the first quarter of the calendar year. This is a second quarter increment.
So they, they were supposed to have answered these questions, is that correct?
I'm sorry, and Ms. Radkovich can correct me.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bob Kowits. Yes, what we had done, when they had come through the first time to request the funding, the Economic Development Committee had asked them to complete some items. It wasn't this specific list of items.
Okay.
What Paul Zalmazak, our economic development coordinator, who's been working with them, has pulled together some of the information to date. Because they've had a successful run now of meeting on a weekly basis and pulling this information together, we've recommended the additional quarter of payment, and then put out the nine items that we think should be done prior to any additional funding.
Okay. So if we approve this tonight, they still need to come back and do these nine items? Correct. Okay. And I think we can add to the nine items Alderman Rainey's concern about Northwestern University. Now, I want, I want that answer too, I would like to know that.
All right, seeing no further lights, City Clerk, would you call the roll for a vote on authorizing the Technology Innovator, Innovation Center 2012 funding request?
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Seven to one.
Seven to one, the motion passes. We are at call of the wards, which begins with Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to echo what the city manager's comments at the beginning of the meeting about the viaduct roll-in. It was, to see it now, well, it's not quite complete yet, is still, is so dramatic. Drive down Chicago Avenue and take a look. I want to thank Aldobarn, and our city staff, Matt Twonikowski, and Erica Storley, Jewel, Whole Foods. I want to also thank all of the folks who've been so patient during this entire process. Once it's finished and done, we'll barely remember this construction period. So I'm looking forward to the next two, and, and then more, and more, and more. And then from now that this viaduct is in, you can so clearly see the metro viaduct that is our next front of attack. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the staff.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson?
And just a reminder that it is Bike to Work Week. The city of Evanston has a lot of information on the website, and I hope to see many of you out at the Race Against Hate this weekend.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to give a big thanks to Dave Stumbach and his crew, who spent many tireless days and nights on Central Street this past, last week, repairing a, I think a record consecutive seven or eight water main breaks. As soon as one was fixed, another did break. And the good news for residents along Central Street and the Sixth Ward is that the water main will be replaced, most likely midsummer, as soon as plans are drawn and we get state IUPA approval.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey? Thank everybody also, as Alderman Nguyen said, for the viaduct work. We had a great meeting this past week with Economic Development and Public Works over the Howard Hartree TIF, and how some of that excess money is going to be spent to improve the infrastructure and just the quality of the way the neighborhood looks. People were very excited about that. Want to announce that this week, on Friday, the bakery at 607 Howard is going to be opening. Fabulous operation. Right next door is a new, new cleaner that moved from Rogers Park on Clark Street, former Kenny Cleaners, it's now called the Elite Cleaners, and they're at 607 and a half Howard Street. The, the wine bar residents moved in today, and we had the delivery from home, from-
Best Buy.
Excuse me, Best Buy. Best Buy, that was very exciting. And the apartment looks great, and construction is just about underway on the wine bar, so we're, we're just thrilled. And I think in a couple of weeks, in a couple of meetings, we're going to have the report from the city manager, city manager, from the architect on the theater, in a couple of weeks, two weeks?
I, I think we're planning on the 25th.
The 25th, 25th, that's our next meeting.
That's two weeks.
That's in two weeks, right. All right, so, also, I want to thank, speaking of synergism, 415 Howard has guest apartments for their tenants, and we had a little glitch in the renovation at 631 Howard, and I just want to say thank you to 415 Howard, because they invited our tenants who couldn't move in to 631 Howard because of this little glitch, invited them into their guest apartment, and they stayed there. and they stayed there free of charge for a week. So it was really, really helpful. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
As everyone knows, children are now out of school and on the streets of Evanston and on the sidewalks. I ask that motorists be more careful and watchful for our students, particularly along parks and schools. As many of you know, there was an accident, again, want to raise that, and along Oakton, I think the Evanston Now reported that some of the biggest accidents happen right near Oakton School, more than any other school in the whole community. So again, be careful while you're out there, please obey the speed limit. Even though we didn't get a reduced speed on Oakton, the speed limit, you should obey the one that is out there, that would be very helpful, and trucks are not supposed to go down Oakton, so please don't do that. And again, cyclists, particularly when you're out there, look for the cars that are making that no right turn on red, they're doing it anyway. I know recently Alderman Wilson almost got hit, and I almost got hit over the weekend riding my bike with a motorist making a right on red. So be careful, we got a lot of people out there this summer.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a very nice experience today observing bicyclists in the downtown who are actually observing the vehicle laws, stopping at red lights. I was, almost opened my window and said, "Wow, thanks very much, we appreciate that." I want to make a reference to planning and development. I've been thinking for a while about Evanston 150, and I would like us to discuss the possibility of replacing the fountain at Fountain Square as our contribution to the Evanston 150. I think this is a major anniversary for the city of Evanston. I think it would improve downtown. I think it would be consistent with our economic development goals and our vision for the downtown, and I think it would be a fabulously wonderful project for us to do. So I'm going to make that reference to planning and development. Finally, we had a great weekend, went to Lupita's for dinner, and then spent three hours looking at the overpass. And everyone, it was amazing the number of people that were there, and it was almost like a little party unto itself. I saw people that I knew to be engineers and architects and various other folks, and it was the middle of the night, and everyone was having a really good time, and kids were enjoying it, and it was really an amazing thing to watch. And I thought the, when we came home, we turned on the webcam and watched it for a little while longer, and it was, it was fabulous. So thank you, staff, for your work on that. It was, it was fun for all.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, Thursday, June 14th, we'll have our second ward meeting at 1500 McDaniel, District 65 building. Neighbors will have an opportunity to meet Mr. and Ms. Darnell Johnson, the owners of Chicago Chicken and Waffle. We'll also hear from the Evanston Police Department giving a neighborhood crime report. In addition, we'll have a continued discussion about the Dempster Dodge Tiff, and also hear two presentations from the leadership Evanston. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson?
I move pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120 slash 2A, that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subject to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120 slash 2A, C-1, C-2, C-11, and C-21.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.